Staring at a video screen.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I call to order the regular meeting of the Denali Borough Planning Commission. At 6:02. May we have a roll call, please? Sorry, I was muted. Lee Lightfoot?
Here.
Eric Houghan?
Here.
Steve Jones? Steve?
Muted.
I can see you. Mark Minkie?
Here.
Baxter Mercer? James Ward?
Here.
Susan Braun?
Here.
Kason Kench?
Here.
All right, everybody's here tonight. All right. Okay. Now it's time for public comments. Please provide your name and area of residence and limit your comments to approximately three minutes. Do we have comments? I can share the one that I emailed yesterday from the Govans if you'd like. Okay. Okay, would you like me to read that? Sure. Okay. So they asked me to share it. It says, "We appreciate being able to participate in the recent public comment meetings on proposed street names in the borough. We understand the importance and effort that went into developing the guidelines which were proposed. However, we also would prefer to keep historic names of roads in the borough when possible. Below are two scenarios for your consideration that apply to roads on map nine in Healy. Number one, our road, which is the proposed as carpet road, has been documented as Boghole Lane dating back to the 1970s when the parcel was first homesteaded. We prefer to keep it as such, suffix included, as a nod to the history and characters who first homesteaded here. All of our legal documents refer to it as such, and it would be nice to avoid the process of updating them. Number two, the proposed Trout Road is recorded as an RS 2477 Trail, is referred to on the DNR site as Healy Creek Diamond Coal Mine Road, including both forks at the western end. More information and its history can be found in the DNR case file summary for RST 709. I've included a map from the DNR site and the pictures below for reference and map nine with the proposed names also for your reference. Thank you for your consideration, Susan and James Govan, Healy Dry Creek."
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I don't have any others in the office or on the phone. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
You have to make the motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Any additions or changes to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Agenda is adopted. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes and we are looking at the minutes of the May 2022 public hearing and regular meeting minutes and the September 16th, 2020 special meeting minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of those two meetings.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes of those two meetings?
They could be wrong and I wouldn't remember. It's been a while.
Come on, Ellen. Okay. All those in favor approving the minutes? Say aye.
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 The minutes are approved. Any correspondence? Other than what we just saw? The only other correspondence is an agenda item. That was in the packet. Okay. And there are no plaits and conditional uses? Not at this time. Could we have the mayor's report, please?
Yeah, thank you. This tension, planning commissioners could be with you this evening and and thanks for your attendance, participation and to those of the public as well. I'm, I'll be working off my assembly report recently submitted to the assembly. A lot of the topics on there do relate to public health and to finances. I'll skip over those, but really the, a number of efforts that do relate to recovery and economic development do relate to planning. And I'd like to go into, go into a few of those topics. Let's start off with a big one and that's the Parks Highway PEL, the Can't Well to Ferry Planning Environmental Linkage Study. It's been going on for a couple of years now. I've let you know about it in the past. In 2020, the needs and opportunities were assessed in this whole corridor. And, and the study team has developed potential solutions and a screening process to evaluate those solutions. The study team recently, and this is, this project is led, it's a partnership, but it's also led by DOT. They're carrying out, leading this study in conjunction with federal highways and with the National Park Service. And the Denali Borough is a part of the study team as well. And I appreciate Mr. Houghan's, Planning Commissioner Houghan's participation is, as well in that, that advisory group that, that's been formed to support this study. So the study team through DOT has opened an online open house seeking public input on which solution should be recommended and how these solutions should be prioritized. The open house is found on the DOT website under Parks, Parks Healy PEL. My written report to the assembly is online and there's a link there, but you could just go to DOT and type in Parks Highway PEL. The comment period runs until, is open right now and runs until May 12th. And I, I got in there not too long ago and went through the whole document and it's extensive. And the, you know, I know some of the solutions they, they, we have been working on all along. They're all in there and I really do want to encourage planning commissioners and the public to, to get in there and make your, your voices heard in terms of what solutions to these issues, some of them pedestrians, some of them traffic safety, some of them geophysical through the corridor. There, there are a lot of really good solutions, especially to some of the issues in the Nanana Canyon relating to parking, relating to traffic flow and, and some solutions that, that would be good for, you know, economic development and economic recovery. So I want to encourage, encourage you to look at, look at that open house and, and participate as you can. Provide an update also on another project, the Bison slash Antler Project. You know, that location of that new parking area is moved up to Antler. Those better gravels and good access to that ridge, calling it the Antler Ridge Trailhead. And that project is, we had an update on it today from DOT and it is on track to, to go to bid, go out to bid, go out to advertise in the, in the next month and hopefully construct later half of this summer. There's a little sketch of the proposed parking lot, trailhead area in the PEL. If you go into the PEL, it talks about that Antler Project and has a rendering of the, the parking area. It is planned now, as it's planned now, it is to have 20 parking spots plus, I think it's about 100 feet of long straightaway for longer rigs, travel trailers and such. And, and there's a one-way entrance. It's not a, not an in and out. It's a one-way in and out as it's currently planned. And with the park service, the borough has put in for a second round of funding through the, that same program that we got this project funded. That's the FLAP, the Federal Lands Access Program. And that second round of flat funding would, would fund the trail improvements and a restroom as well. So, um, so we're hopeful, but that, those monies, if they come through, will not be available immediately. And, you know, there could be a time when we have, we have the parking area, but not a real improved trail just yet. So, um, so we'll be thinking about that. Speaking of trails and outdoor recreation, every five years, the state of Alaska must update its statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, the SCORP, in order to remain eligible for federal, for federal funds through the LWCF Land Water Conservation Fund. With the passage of the Great American Outdoors Act last year, there's, there's a fair amount more money set to flow through the LWCF. And states, including Alaska, need to be prepared and have their SCORPs ready and have projects ready. And boy, the last time the SCORP was updated, just five years ago in 2016, Denali Borough played no role. Didn't really know what was happening and the, the SCORP itself is a pretty much of a broad brush plan saying, "We support outdoor recreation." To the state's credit and in partnership with the National Park Service, because these, these monies really do come through interior, the park service through the regional office offered to provide technical assistance and staff time to the state who really didn't have the resources to, to, to mount a thorough planning effort for a more actionable SCORP that would engage local communities. So really in partnership, they are doing just that. And they've, they've reached out to the borough and, and we've said, "We'll be, we'll be an active participant." And actually they've given us our own region in this plan. Usually we get lumped in with interior, it's a little side note, but we're going to be our own region, have our own section in this comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. And outdoor recreation is of course really important to both residents of the borough and to visitors. We are premier destination in many ways because of outdoor recreation. And at the same time, we think that, that there's also room for improvement. That we have so many opportunities for improved outdoor recreation here. And so, so we've been convening Denali Region SCORP Working Group comprised of agencies, departments. See, we have somebody from DNR on the line. DNR has been helpful along the way as well as DOT, of course, National Park Service, local businesses, local voices, together to form this working group. We would love to have some, I'll be talking with some others as well to bring them into the conversation and, and, and present good Denali projects to improve outdoor recreation in the statewide comprehensive plan. So let me know if you might be interested in serving on that working group. It is going to meet, oh, the level of commitment. It's definitely going to be about a five, six month process, I think, and, and the meetings might be every three, four weeks kind of thing. We've got a pretty good group going already, but happy to have a commissioner to jump in as well and help out. And I'd be happy to kind of show you what we've been working on. So that's in the works as well as, remember the community mapping project that the state half paid for? And we jumped in with a partnership with the state on that aerial mapping of the, of our communities, A, and a lot of borough lands, B. That project is closed out, is completed and will be, will be getting the, the final product in not too distant future and, and look forward to sharing those maps with you. We think they're going to, we think they're going to be valuable, especially for planning purposes. And, and then I know we have the, the public, pardon me, the, the road naming on project on the agenda later, but I do just want to say what a robust process I thought it was from a month-long comment period with, gosh, we got, received 160 different online submittals. We, we created a pretty easy form for people to fill out. Really want to thank Marcia and Trina for, for putting together those forms and, and providing that month-long online comment period. And then the three nights of Zoom meetings. Thanks to the commissioners and assembly members, we had such good, strong attendance. I thought they were really valuable and then we'll talk about the themes that we all heard and discuss potential next steps. But, um, you know, I'm proud of the public process that, that we put on even. I thought it was going to be pretty challenging with the Zoom, but overall we had a lot of participation. And I know we'll continue to talk about in-person meetings versus not, not necessarily versus, they can be in conjunction with virtual meetings. We heard a lot of people say that they were more engaged because it was virtual, that they could attend from their living room. At the same time, we also recognize the value of in-person meetings. And so I know that'll be of interest as well. So, so I think I'll, I'll close my report with that and say thanks. And be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the mayor? Not at this time. Thank you. So Marcia, do you have a report for us?
I have a few things for you guys. I sent out an email. I've heard from a couple of you, but just a reminder, if you haven't gotten the email, is this Sunday is kind of a part two of the Alaska Planning Conference. They broke it up this year into two parts and this time I sent like the little flyer along with it and it tells them what they're going to do. And some of it did cover like finding a fax. It's just a four-hour little training. If you want to sign up, you can. You don't have to attend it on Sunday. You can watch it after. Anytime you want, you can watch part one and part two of it. Just let me know because we need to get signed up before the class. And then that way they'll give us the code to log in later. Yeah, this month we, we're going to have some plaits, but a personal issue came up with the surveyor and he wasn't able to get them completed in time. So maybe next month he's shooting for. And then I'm still working on some comments that people have been submitting for the road naming and answering questions for some people. So it's still in the works, still answering some questions. And then we do have Ms. Caitlin from DNR. She's on, online, just in case you guys have any questions or anything about the Alamo Lakes Remote Cabin Site stuff. So when you get to that, if you have any questions, you can ask her. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, and do we have a commissioner that attended the assembly meeting that would like to report? Or the mayor?
Sure. I'd be happy to provide a little report about assembly activities and agendas. Right now they are in the budget process as they introduce the amended FY21 budget. And we are presenting the FY22 new budget at the special meeting upcoming on April 28th to be introduced and then considered at the May regular meeting and likely the June regular meeting as well. The, the land management section of that budget, which does include the items that relate to the planning commission aren't, aren't changed a whole lot from the kind of constrained FY21 amendment. You know, we do definitely have a constrained travel and training line item as there's certainly wasn't as much travel and, and likely won't be the next year. But there's also room in there to, to attend conferences, especially virtually. And, and we have a constrained budget all around and, you know, really look carefully at some of those land bigger ticket items such as consultant fees in which we lump surveying and oh, for example, potential GIS consultant to help develop our, our GIS system for the road for the street addressing system. Right now we do have enough in there to continue and, and follow through with the existing boundary surveys that are being, that are in progress for Auto Lake and Anderson Parcels. And we have enough in there to continue with the Anderson Land Swap around the landfill. We did receive survey instructions for the Healy Parcel and we're currently not planning on developing that project and putting that out to bid and seeing, seeing how much that, that survey will be. We're, we're planning on a little pause there. And especially as we do have, you know, three really outstanding boundary surveys to come back. So, so, um, so that's some of the thought going into the land management budget. And we want to reduce the, the transfer necessary from the general fund. Land enterprise has not been self-sustaining. It does require transfer from the general fund and a stated budget priority has been to preserve general fund and, and reduce fund transfers.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is communication and appearance requests. I don't see anything on there for that. And there is no unfinished business, so we're on to new business. Business item K1 is resolution 21-1 conceptual approval request for Alma Lakes Remote Recreational Cabin Sites. Is there a motion? Yes, Steve?
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So now we're on to discussion and is there someone here to speak on this? Yes, Steve?
I've traveled through that area with the dog team. I've been there with a packraft, a kayak, a sea kayak and a jet boat. It's a hard area to get into. The, there's a few cabins out there right now and the only access other than a float plane that I could see be reasonable would be a jet boat, I mean, an airboat, not a jet boat. Because a jet boat, oftentimes there's not enough water for a jet boat. Sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't. But it's a beautiful place. A couple of lakes are big enough for a float plane. You know, it's, and it's had a disposal in it in the past. That, I don't know, there must be half a dozens or maybe eight parcels out there that are in private ownership. Kind of hard to tell. It's been years since I've looked at the original proposal. But that kind of indicates there's, you know, a few of them proved up on, on the map that we have on about the things. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, kind of a nice area and it's hard to get to.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Caitlin Fuqua from DNR and the Alma Lakes Project is one of the projects that I'm adjudicating. So I think Steve really just captured everything about the project area. The, I will confirm that the primary access would be float planes. So we are not expecting anybody or claiming primary access through the RSTs. Just, they may provide access within the project area. So, but if you have any other questions, I think you all have the map, the staking map. If you have any other questions, then feel free to ask them and I can answer them.
Thanks, Caitlin. Susan, did you have something?
It looks really wet, so there's enough good ground out there for people to find a spot. I guess there must be or you wouldn't be doing it.
Yeah, it is pretty wet. And so the entire project area is about 9,000 acres large. And that's generally what we try and do with our remote wreck cabin site project areas is make, give a big area for disposal and then stakers will go out there and find what they want, the, the ground that they're looking for. So this project area is most of our remote wreck staking areas only allows for up to 30 staking authorizations. So at most only 600 acres in the 9,000 acres would be able to be staked. So it's a real low-density project area and there are areas that are dry. It's a lot of wet areas, but there are some dry areas. So I have a feeling if I were to guess, we'd see people probably staking around the big fly-in lakes.
I guess my only reservation with this is you have to have a plane to get there. It kind of restricts who's going to be able to do it, but then that's Alaska, so.
Yeah.
Can't really help it.
It does. And we do have some remote wreck project areas that are along the road system, but it is very difficult to open up or to find land, large enough pieces of land that the state owns to open up near a road system for the remote wreck program. And the, the intent behind the program is almost to be as remote as possible. People who apply for this program are not looking for generally road accessible, easy to access subdivision parcels.
Steve?
Well, I'm looking at one parcel that I didn't file on when it was originally put up for filing years ago. And I intend to go there and stake that if at all possible.
Oh, well, fantastic.
So, yeah, there it, and one of the attractions to the area is the fact that it's so wet.
Okay.
And I've hunted moose there many times. And the reason I go there, not many times, four times, is that there's very little competition.
That's great. We've had, we've had some interest in this area. And as you mentioned before, it was previously offered under the Bear Paw Remote Wreck Staking Area, which extends over to the west and encompasses more of the Bear Paw River. So the Alma Lakes Project Area took just the eastern portion of the Bear Paw Staking Area and then added, believe, six sections to the south of it.
Great. Are there any other comments? Yeah, Eric?
Hey, just a question for Caitlin and Steve too. Is the green Coby Cantishna line and then the Roosevelt, are those snow machine trails? Or is that just a divider on the map?
Yeah, they're RS2477 Trails. I have been warned that the conditions on the trails vary throughout the year and may not be the best. So that's definitely on-the-ground testing. That I myself have not been able to get out there and do that. So I wouldn't put tons of stock in the trails, but they are reserved access. So the public, they're open to the public to use and all go all the way up to Nanana, I believe.
Okay, no longer, no more than I say it, then my thing finally zooms out and I can see RS477.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Thank you, yeah. Sorry about that. I'm having trouble trying to navigate two screens on a small laptop. But, yeah, I was just wondering, yeah, you answered the second question, like, what's the condition of it? Just, I know some people have asked already at work and they heard about the project. Like, hey, what do you guys know? And I can take that back to them, so thanks.
Steve?
About 25 years ago, I did both of those trails with Dog Team, maybe 30 years ago. And it was difficult at that time. And it would even be more difficult today because they've overgrown more than when I was last on them. They are there. Good luck. You have, mostly because they were trails to begin with, they're overgrown with willows and alders right now. So you actually have a harder time going on the trail than you have going away from the trail. You know, for whatever that's worth. And I almost got run over by an airboat while I was coming down with a sea kayak one time. Whatever that's worth, too. You know? So you don't necessarily have to have an airplane to access at least the portion that's along the Bear Paw River off of the Cantishna River. There's a few places there that you could get into.
Yeah, that's definitely true. If somebody wanted to navigate the river there to the northwestern portion of the project area, they can definitely do that.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we ready for a vote? Yes, yes, okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Susan Braun?
Sorry, can't remember to unmute. I vote yes.
James Ward?
Yes.
Lee Lightfoot?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
I think he gave a thumbs up.
Okay, thanks. Steve Jones?
Yes.
Mark Minkie?
Yes.
Eric Halgan?
Yes.
Kesslyn Tetch?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. All right, let's get back up. All right. Business Item K2, Discussion Item of Initial Road Naming Meetings Review and Next Steps. So I think every, did everyone have a chance to attend at least one of those meetings? I attended all three of them. Yep, so we got an idea of some of the issues that were coming up. So Mayor, what are the next steps? What are we?
Well, yeah, we have several potential routes forward. And I would say in reviewing the body of the input, the whole of the input, we did have some themes relating to a durable system. We heard that from some folks who wanted to see some of that standardization we've been talking about and saw value in a durable system that's going to last. While at the same time, we also did hear a number of comments toward a level of flexibility to, especially in the initial naming process. Specifically, I think, you know, we all heard three, three main kind of issues rose to the top. The redundancy, the duplicate name issue, and whether that could be addressed by saying no duplicates within communities, within, you know, some defined geographic area, maybe even by miles, but, or zip codes. And we heard the suffixes, the suffixes that we, that we, you know, we borrowed from another municipality as a standardized way to do suffixes. And a lot of historical suffixes that would need to be changed to conform to that standard. You know, we heard folks recommending to allow some flexibility along those lines. And there was a third. Those were two prominent ones. The third one was Mr. Jones. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, punctuation, thank you. Punctuation was the third that I had, the themes that I had jotted down. And, yep, some of those recommended native names that had a fair amount of punctuation and a way to, to both recognize, honor those native names and desire to have native names in the Cantwell area while at the same time also having those names be used by dispatch and by emergency responders. So, so I'd say those were the three, the three things to kind of work on more. And, and what are the recommended steps for working on those? Well, you know, the Planning Commission is going to be the body who this is going to come to, right? You guys are going to be the ones who approve these road names. And it makes sense to me that this potential rewrite, if that's the will of the body, to allow for more flexibility, which could result in, you know, a less durable, sometimes a little less usable system, potentially, potentially. But there are gradients there, right? If that's the will of the body to move that way, that I would like to see the Planning Commission, you know, consider what it wants to see in that code and then it go to the Assembly for approval. What do you think of that approach? Because you guys are going to be the ones, you know, working, working in that code, working with it. When people come for variances, they're going to come to the Planning Commission.
Steve?
Under, let's see, 912040, Section B, the Planning Commission, after consideration of all factors and public testimony, may allow exceptions to foregoing upon a finding that the public interest is not harmed and provided that exception complies with NEMA standards. That gives us the avenue to adopt something like, or recommend something like, not adopt, but recommend something like historic names as they exist are used as long as they're not duplicates in the same community or under the same zip code could be used. Once this is passed and that's accepted, we follow the standard from now on. So there would be very, not that many exceptions to the rule. It also allows us, well, the other comment I had about this is, you know, Anderson has autonomy. Well, in a large sense of the way, Otten and the Cantwell Village are just as autonomous through the federal government, but not through the state and the borough. Why not give them the autonomy that Anderson has? Let them name the names in their property and on their lands however they want to. Use whatever kinds of suffixes, punctuation, whatever they need, so that it's written the way it's supposed to be written. You know, I've seen like the Lemai Shoshone in, south of Flathead Lake in Montana, they removed all the green and white signs from DOT and they put their own up. And they're brown and white signs and they have the native name on top. And in smaller letters below, they have a translation or the, probably to make it easier for people to understand where they are. But, you know, I thought that's a beautiful system. It really defines that this is native land. You know, I think that was a good solution for them. You know, something like that, whatever Cantwell and Otten wants to do, let them do it. That's my opinion. And they've been working on names anyway. Let them finish. So that's about it.
Any other discussion on that? Marcia?
Anderson is an incorporated city. And they actually have a governing body which will decide on road names and their procedures. And that's why we don't. Unfortunately, everywhere else in the borough is unorganized or unincorporated. So like Cantwell does have it and they can, but they'd have to have some kind of formal body if you're going to allow them to decide their own names and do their own stuff. They have to have their own system down there. Although Anderson is, they can choose their own road names, the borough is still going to be housing their database. We're still going to update it and everything. We do the same thing with the park. The park is also, since they're a federal agency, they can choose their own road names and stuff. But they've opted to follow the borough's rules and do as much as complacency because, you know, it's our database, their information is going to be housed in.
Susan?
So at that first meeting, wasn't there discussion about you can't have an apostrophe, but you could have a space? So is there a way to, to work with their names in your system? Marcia?
Part of the problem is, is punctuation is a postal code requirement. They only allow four types of punctuation in an address. And they consider theirs as a mailing address and that's how they label it. So you still have to follow their standards. Because otherwise, if you don't follow their standards, it won't be a verifiable, recognized address. So you'll still get the same errors if you're trying to fill in on the, like an online buying site or something like that. In their system, they only allow like a backslash, a period, a pound sign, and a hyphen. Are kind of the four symbols that they use. And generally, those are in just the numbers. Usually, a computer system will eliminate, even in the, if you put an apostrophe, the automated system removes it. But I've had it sometimes where I tried to put like, I live at a quarter mile and I put .25, the system will get rid of it and now I live at 25 mile.
Yeah.
Kind of thing. And it's, it's because automated systems, a lot of them aren't designed to have punctuation or special characters in them. Because computer systems recognize these special characters as something completely different than we do. Sometimes people have had problems where they put apostrophes or periods or other symbols where the system will either spit it out, it won't recognize it, or it causes an issue, especially in automated systems. So like a lot of the, a few places for like dispatch. So Nina has discovered there are some places where it won't recognize it if they try to type it in that way. And it's because it's an automated system, it has to search through a database.
Yeah.
Why we recommended not punctuation. And then the other part was, is a lot of it was, you need to have some simply pronounceable words. And that was some of the other stuff I was discussing with them is that some of the words they were coming up with, I was having a hard time pronouncing it, especially, you know, knowing like where their syllables are. And I think it would be, you know, a kind of a problem if you remove the apostrophes from their word or just kept the spaces in between them because you don't know where the vowels carry. And I think it would make some more confusion that way. So I had it, you know, I was still talking with them to figure it out, what they wanted. And we've got some of their native names down there. We're still discussing some other ones.
Lee?
I was at that first of those three meetings or I was online. How many names are we talking here, Marcia? I didn't count how many names were in play.
Down in Cantwell, I didn't put on there some of the ones I'm still discussing with them. There might be maybe six or seven names that are still in discussion because I've said that they're not quite acceptable by our code now. Altogether down in that area, you know, we probably, Cantwell got hit pretty hard for community-wise. Next one is the Coby Ag Area. Were the ones where there was a lot of duplication and part of our code too is like no alphabet streets or number streets. And Cantwell, actually in the, kind of around the school, they had number streets. So we renamed a lot of those. I would have to say they probably had a good 20 or 30 streets that got renamed in the area.
But I mean, there was like, what'd you say, six? That was a pager toner test for the fire. The, so there were six names that struggled with punctuation. Is that my understanding?
Yes, about maybe six names were still in discussion in Cantwell. A few of those, I had a few more, but then I got some recommendations for some other names which were put on the list.
Well, I'm glad to hear you're still working on it and look forward to seeing you.
Eric, did I see your hand? Eric's gone.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Marcia, on that, so I was in the meetings, the first two meetings and on here in the road naming. So as far as the punctuation grows, can we, in the gray part, name it without the punctuation on the plat and official so that way people can plug it in, it won't reject or whatever. But then when it comes to actually ordering the street signs and naming it, can we plug the punctuation? And I don't see it confusing any. I don't see it confusing any first responders because they're going to go, oh, hey, this one has an apostrophe in it, I should go to the next one without an apostrophe. So that would be my question, could we do something like that?
There is a potential you could do that. You know, some of that isn't just for first responders, you need the locals that can read the signs and then you have children, tourists and stuff like that. I don't know if somehow it could get crossed is that, you know, in our database, I would know that none of those names are that way. But then, you know, like Google doesn't, they're an open source place, so they don't take information from me. They'll take it from the general public before they'll take information from me. And if you, and they go by road signs, so if they see punctuation in it, they're going to put it in their database that way. So then it's going to appear on maps with punk, with the punctuation in it, which if that's the same case for like GPS systems and other systems, other maps and stuff, you know, the names are going to be a little bit different. In general, you could probably figure a lot of the names out, but in some of them, you know, the special characters on top really does mean a lot, especially with how you pronounce things. Like if you have French names and stuff like that.
It's just from my perspective, hearing everybody talk at that first commission meeting, I, I think it's important, like Lee had mentioned too, and, and Steve, that we honor their, their names down there. And if we can figure out some way to do that, that works, then I would like to see us press forward that way.
Jim?
James?
Hi, you know, I'm curious about the rest of the state with, with the punctuation. I know, I hope I pronounced right, Uk Tiagvik has that interesting punctuation that they brought up recently and it does sound similar. I'm wondering how the postal service deals with that and maybe other small towns or places that have any punctuation. And that might be something that we just need to look up. I don't know if we know the answer right now, but it's, it's something that I've been thinking about.
Steve.
You know, Uk Tiagvik and, and Denali Borough are home rule boroughs, only two in the state, I think. And they are under different, they're different than the second and third class boroughs or the first and second class boroughs of the state. Allows, they, it was written into the state constitution to allow people to maintain their own identity. And I think that we ought to take advantage of that, not try to be like everybody else.
Tim.
Yeah, the other thing I think of, we got some very strong comments, seemed pretty unanimous in support of the punctuation from the folks in those communities. And I guess I'm just curious if it truly is unanimous or if maybe folks who disagree with punctuation just didn't have a chance to speak up. I guess we'll have to wait for their, wait for their comments if they prefer not to have the punctuation.
Um, okay, I, one other thing that we haven't brought up that I note, that I remember hearing a lot of discussion about on the, the Cantwell meeting was North Wind Way. And I'm wondering if there is flexibility with that particular street? Cause it, it seem, it seems pretty passionate. We had some very intense conversation around that street. Yes.
Yeah, thanks, if I may. Yeah, and I think the point, one of the points was a north wind is, isn't necessarily a direction. It's, it's, it's a phenomenon. And to Mr. Jones's point that yes, in code, the planning commission can approve variances, basically exceptions to the rules when the finding is that it's not necessarily harmful. You know, I've been thinking about, and I, and I recognize that going into this and, and that's one of the reasons I, I really want the planning commission to be involved in any potential changes because again, you're the ones who are going to, people are going to be coming to. I guess with that, Mr. Jones, were you saying, were, were you thinking about the process in a way that it might not necessarily need a code change for directionality, for duplications? That those could be approved and then no more going forward, right? Those could be approved that are in different communities, those could be approved that are, you know, that, that makes sense. And boy, there were some examples of those to me that made sense. I mean, oh, a Wolf Street in, in the old Cantwell, being confused with a Camping Loop at Riley Creek Campground. I just, I, I, I see, you know, there, that kind of allowance for a potential variance, you know, as in the code that we have right now.
And, and, yeah, and if I, I can add something. If we, if we look at a code change, that puts this whole process back at least two months.
Oh, yeah.
Or more. But if we, if we allow for the code that we have and, and work within that and, and work with some of those, that flexibility that we wrote into the code, then, then I think that, that is what we need to be doing instead of setting the whole process back by doing amendments and changing the code. Steve, you had something?
I was just going to say that the reason that section B is in there is to allow us to do stuff like that.
Yep.
Yeah, and maybe if, if I might, I'm kind of interested in the suffix conversation next.
Yeah.
It's interesting, how valuable are those? And that, that standardization that is, you know, we borrowed it from somewhere else. Not every place has that standardization of, of suffixes. I think it's worth considering.
I, I thought it was very interesting, just, just in my own, on my own street. So I live on Galena Place, but when they put the street sign up, it's Galena Street. I, I don't know. And, and then when it was proposed for road naming, it's Galena Place. So not sure where that all came from. But, but yeah. Steve?
It, I, you know, I think I've made my position clear. I, I think that the historic names up to the point where they're adopted by the assembly should pretty much rule where it, it all, at all can be put in place without creating a definite problem. And going forward, then we can follow whatever naming criteria the code says. I don't have any problem with that, but I do have a problem with changing people's historic names when some of them have been there far longer than the borough's been there and been using the same name for many, many years.
Right, and especially when it creates a hardship on people.
Well.
I mean, we don't need people to be, have, have to change title and, you know, legal forms, legal documents.
Everybody's going to have to change their legal documents, their forms, whatever they're using. I can guarantee there's probably maybe one lucky person that might have addressed, you know, done, but pretty much everybody in the borough is going to have to take in a new variation because you're going to have to give your actual street number to people, which nobody has the correct one right now, so you're still going to have to. So the difference between changing a suffix isn't as big, you know, on a street name where a lot of people are thinking, oh, well, this can cause a lot of problems where to them, you're going to get an official letter that has your address on it and they should just be able to put it, as long as the street name doesn't change. You know, it wouldn't be as big for some people, but everybody's going to have to change legal documents, driver's licenses, DM registration, voter registration. So that's where a lot of people are coming in, they're like, oh, I don't want this to change because then I have to change my documents. Well, in actuality, you're going to have to change your documents anyways because you don't have a proper official address.
Yeah, there's no number.
And he needs to have the official one because they call the borough and they'll verify the information on your documents. And if you have whatever's made up, it'll get denied. It'll be like, nope, that's not recognized, that's not it. You know, going forward, if you do have a real address or a borough issued one, yeah, your address wouldn't be verifiable.
Lee.
I think the goal here of getting us all house numbers and streets so we can buy things online and access, you know, be registered and know where we are, be able to communicate where we are and help emergency services is, is really what we need. We, we don't need to sync, sync this project because we, we just need to realize the value in having an address. I, I think there's a value in having an address.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, oh, go ahead, Jim.
Oh, I was going to pass along, I heard from some folks in the Tri Valley subdivision that mentioned that they had a court that was being renamed Place or a place being renamed Court, things to that effect, where, you know, I know our cutoff is a thousand feet in length and the roads were six hundred feet or twelve hundred feet. And I think that level of flexibility is a, is a different question really than, you know, they prefer not to change from road to lane. So that might be something to consider, you know, in specific cases.
And did they put that, did they, it like, put that comment in so the borough has it?
You know, I should ask them to, I don't believe they did.
Yeah, they need to, they need to definitely, is that form still available?
There's a general comment form and a lot of people have been just directly emailing me or they send their comments to the email address that's set up for our addressing program, which is just addressing at denaliborough.com. So people can submit comments or questions to that email address.
Okay. Yeah, so Jim, try to come, communicate with them and make sure that they put that, that comment in. Okay, so, um, so what is the process now moving forward? If we, if we say that our code is fine and we're going to be flexible, what do we do?
Well, yeah, that's, I think we're having a good discussion about it and I think it's going to continue a little bit here at least. And that is, you know, a couple of different ways. One is to pursue a, a code change that in code would, would allow maybe greater flexibility than we already have. We have some flexibility as it is, it's case by case review basically, right? And, and do we want to continue move and move forward? I mean, continue to move forward with naming roads with our existing structure and rules, which will be implemented going forward. But yeah, on a, on a case by case basis, as the historical ones come to us, come to the planning commission, that the planning commission could allow flexibility and, and variances from the standard through that process, through the existing process.
Good.
What do you think?
All right, Steve.
And, and I agree with that except for the Ottena spelled names. You know, I, I would like to see us have, because a lot of those ra- names are not historically named Ottena names yet because Ottena's been working on that for a year or two. And they, so, you know, you don't have signs and people calling them the Ottena names. And I think we ought to take that into consideration when we're submitting this to the assembly. And if, you know, if it takes putting a translation below it to make it acceptable, maybe Ottena would be, that would be an acceptable solution to everybody. I don't know. But I, I, you know, I would like to work with them on using their names, how they see fit to use them. And if that takes a code change, then I think we need to do that. And if it takes two months, it takes two months. That's my opinion. If we can do it under the section B, that gives us flexibility, fine. You know, then we don't have to go through a code change. But, you know, I think we ought to honor what they want to call their roads, however they want to call them. And I, I do think they have a form of government. They have a village and a village council and chief and whatever. That is a form of government for them. May not be for our white society, but it is for them and it is their land. So yes, they have autonomy on their land. You need a permit to use their trails. You can't hunt, you can't bury pick on their land. Stuff like that.
Most of the roads are not on Ottena land. All the road names that they're wanting are actually on private property, which falls under more borough jurisdiction because yeah, they do have a, you know, native council down there, but does the native council allow for the non-natives to have say in their process? I'm right, there's only been maybe two names down there that were on Ottena property or were suggested by Ottena.
I think we can agree that there's more work on this one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And directly with the community.
Eric.
Yeah, just based on what Mayor Walker just said, I was thinking the same thing. Should we have a, a special or set a particular month to just discuss that, you know, let's say Cantwell as a whole and then the Ottena names and then give them some time, so push it out a little bit? Meaning like maybe we start rolling out with this stuff going from north to south, give them more time to, to work their process and some of the things that Steve had mentioned today, whether it's the names there and then there's a translation below or whatever. And then we have a special meeting or just a month set up in the out months, you know, July, August, September sometime to go ahead and just concentrate on that one subject area. What would you guys think about that?
Good solution.
I, I kind of look at Marcia too, like, hey, Marcia, you know, you steers a little bit on this, what, what's your thoughts on that?
I guess that depends on if you guys actually want to have meetings directly with the community. But some of the stuff is, is that, you know, in the rural world, yeah, the street signs can have probably whatever you want on them, but there's a difference. The database I have to construct is a national standard database where there's certain criteria that has to go in it. So like, if you have a native road name, I can't add in the translation of the road name or else it's going to look like the native name plus the translated name, all as one category. So there's not additional stuff to go with the new next gen nine one one. There's certain criteria that needs to be in this database. So it makes it difficult to add some of this other stuff into it or do it because I'm set by certain rules of what I need to give for dispatch and places and other entities, postal service and what their criteria is and what they recognize. Otherwise, we're building a database that's not going to be used by anybody, usable by anybody.
So I'll just finish out on mine, oh, sorry, just real quick if I may. So just based on what Marcia said, maybe those are the facts that we bring to that discussion table saying, hey, these are the parameters we got to work in, but now here's some of the, the operating space we can do like with Steve's ideas or whatever else. And I'll turn it over, thanks.
Okay, Mark, Mark's next.
Oh, Marcia, it seems as if you've been having conversation with Ottena already about several of the streets down there and you said you're down to like six or seven yet that you're still talking with them on? Is that correct?
Yeah, I've been in contact with like some of the, the group of the Ottena.
Yeah, I've been in contact with like some of the the group of um, the Ottenis representative down there and then some of the. I've been talking with them. They have gotten together and they've decided um, a lot of Cantwell has actually in the areas, they've gotten together and. Um, chosen some of their names. And yeah, there's still a few I need to work on, um, because of a few of the road names. Um, you know, that I had originally before the meetings, I haven't gotten in contact with them yet. Um, is they weren't, they weren't meeting the standard then. And it was more of uh, the no punctuation and the hard pronouncibility of some of the words.
So, based on your past conversations, I mean, do you feel as if you and Ottenis will find a a compromise on these last six or seven roads that. Have a name that they'll be happy with and, you know, preserve their heritage with and the uh, one that'll still fit inside our system. You think you the. Two sides will reach agreement on these last six or seven roads?
There's a possibility, yeah, we can. It's, I mean, there's the two options right now is. Um, one, they either do a name that's like a translation of their native word. Um, or they can pick another native name. That would be a little bit easier for a guest, a child, or somebody that could pronounce it. Um, and those were kind of the options that I had sent. I haven't followed up with them yet to find out how they were feeling on it. Um, with that new suggestion, um. The other thing is, is yeah, they could be, you know, we could reverse it instead of having the native name like on top. And then the translated name on the bottom, if they were to put, do it the opposite way where they had the, you know, the translated name on the top and then. Um, their uh, and that would be the street name. They could have below it the uh, the native name so people could learn. How to pronounce it and learn what these things mean would be a good themed, you know, way to do stuff down in that area. Um. It's kind of another thing I've been thinking about if we reversed it.
So we just got a clarification from Tammany that um, the conversations are not with Ottenis, they're with the native village of Cantwell. Um, I think Steve was next.
So the Northwest Arctic Borough has to have confronted this issue. With the changes from Nome to Ukiah Vic and stuff like that. We ought to ask them how they dealt with it.
Their home world too.
Okay, Lee. You almost got it.
All right.
There you go.
Unmuted without the spacebar this time. Okay, I I think what may come down to is. What's entered in the database is is gonna have to be what you use at times and um. If database is. Is uh, the people that live on the street are gonna have to know what what their street is entered in in the database and uh. It may have apostrophes on the sign and um. May have apostrophes or punctuation in your pronunciation, but um. When when you enter in the data and enter and fill out a form or something. That that's gonna check back against the database, you're gonna have to realize, you're gonna have to see that, well. I- if I don't put the apostrophes in, it's recognized as a legal address by the federal system. And um, ma- maybe that's a solution. It it's not the best, but maybe that's the solution.
We just got a interesting comment from Gordon. He he says how how did the um. How how are the streets in Hawaii done? Because there's lots of apostrophes in Hawaiian names. So that would be a good question, a good research um, to do.
And Gordon does have his hand raised.
Oh, where? Wait. Can I see Gordon? I did not see Gordon's hand raised.
His hand is down now.
I took, I took it down cuz I asked the question. I didn't really wanna interrupt your guys' meeting. Other than to confirm, other than to confirm what Tammy was saying. The conversations are with the native village of Cantwell, not so much with Ottenis directly. And the native village of Cantwell is a federally recognized tribe. That, you know, we we do have some autonomy as Mr. Jones was uh, speaking to, you know.
Okay, thank you Gordon. Okay, um. So, so do we just, um, so again, I'm trying to figure out. What is the process for? Do we need to have some public meetings? Um, this could elude some of um. Some of Lee's antiness to get back together. Um, if we, you know, had had some maps up in the community center and, you know. Arranged for people to come and look at maps. What are the thoughts? Lee.
I I think we need to have this on the fault, the next month's agenda. And I think we need to um, see how the result, how those s- seven streets that we're calling it. Have progressed. And maybe we start finalizing streets. From the north end of the borough coming south. And not instead of all of them at once, I'm not sure.
And give, maybe give um, Cantwell um, the native village of Cantwell a little bit more time to. To um, name the streets that they're working on.
Yeah, I I I think the the maybe the way to get some, a little more time down here is to start up north and work south. And uh, and and I doubt this can be a one night process anyway. But we certainly wanna check back on this process on the south end uh, at the next meeting and um. Maybe whatever we're gonna do northern, as we start from the north end south, is is what we should start.
I I'm wondering if we could do, I mean, if if we're, it it makes sense in a. In a public hearing to confine the discussion to. Um, to one area of the borough at a time. Um, and and so I really liked the way we did it, you know, section by section with the three meetings. I'm wondering if in an in-person meeting, if if we had the maps up. And we had like notes that people could like write on or something or, you know, for comments. If we had more um, more comments or something. And also if we had like a list of. Here are the changes or or here, I don't know. Something about, you know, road name changes and had a list on the wall so people could say. You know, and and we as commissioners could go through the list and say, all right, you know. This one should be fine, or this one should be fine, or, you know, allow some flexibility and, I don't know. Sorry, I I saw Eric's hand next.
Hey, on that note, I I I had two uh, two suggestions. So I. I like Lee's idea and I think I mentioned it too, like starting north going south, but um. The way that we rolled out on the land management plan worked really good where we went by those sections. So if we. Structure the next few planning commissioner meetings where we went north to south. Started with the the names that don't need any discussion, like, and I'm talking, we could probably do that borough wide where. There are a few or a bunch of streets that there were no discussion, right? It was done, they, there was no public comment on them. We could have those lined up and make that like next month's meeting, just knock that out. And then go like we did land management plan where we, we went by that section. So start north and then, okay, I'm I'm gonna move it way south quickly, but let's say. Stampede, boom, what are the the contested names or what are the ones that we need to work on? And then we get those blocks knocked out. Then going back to what Lee said, giving Ottenis and the people of uh, Cantwell time to work on it. I know not Ottenis. Not Ottenis, but the people at Cantwell to work on that. Over.
Okay, Steve, I saw your hand.
Me?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, um. There was a lot of, I mean, a a lot of uh, wondering if from up in the north end, there was a lot of comments, especially out. The Ag Parcels and stuff of keeping the historic names. And that uh, the whole meeting, the whole two hours. In seven minutes or whatever it was, was taped. So if we have any questions, we certainly have plenty of. Public comment recorded that it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't, if you have, if you didn't write, take notes and stuff when. During the meeting and you have questions about what was being said, it might be worth your time to spend a few minutes. In the areas, in that one area specifically where there was so much um. Passion in what they wanted.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanna confirm that and talk a little bit more about our process and make sure we're on the same page. And um, Marcia and Amber and I didn't really uh, confer about this particular approach. Of not doing a a code amendment, but um, because we did hear interest in that, right? We we heard interest, we kinda thought that's maybe the route that we're going. Okay, so we're gonna. We're gonna kinda put things, yeah, on on a little bit of ice until we figure out what we're doing on the code because. That's how we're gonna move forward. But if we're gonna move forward with our code existing and take, take exceptions. On a case by case basis and yeah, using the existing code where the planning commission approves that variance. Um, I just wanna maybe pause and and make sure that Marcia, Amber, you know, and all planning commissioners are. Are good with that approach going forward and think that's workable. Um, can I ask Marcia first?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Marcia and Amber.
I don't know if I can get what you guys want ready by the next meeting, cuz there's a lot. I mean, you can do each section, but there are a lot of duplicates. We probably had a hundred and twenty duplicate names from the north into the south end of the borough. Which if you're wanting to reverse those, we're gonna have to come up with a list of. These were all the duplicates and these are where they're located, cuz we have like six different roads, names clear. There's a clear sky, a clear view, a clear day, a clear, um, and some of our own in the same area or they're just in all the northern region, but. I'd have to reverse all those and then, like, if you don't wanna suffix changes, if you're thinking those are gonna be your variants, then. We need to show the list of all the suffixes that we propose to change. Um, so you guys can see that if you guys are wanting to amend this, but you guys are gonna have to have a final writing saying that. You're allowing this and you do not believe it's gonna be a detriment to public safety, because that's the only way. That you guys can add a variance is if you believe that this is not gonna be a public safety issue. Um, allowing all these variances that you have, um, that you're wanting to do without the changing. Um, I believe if you guys don't want this, then you should just get it out of code. You should just change code how it is, cuz. The problem with having exceptions to the rules or until this date means. I have to keep a historical record of the changes, what things or certain things, which would be in some cases, you know, moving forward. If you have some roads that are following the suffix changes and then you have the other half that are not. Then it kinda makes it a moot point, cuz you're not gonna know which roads are actually following the suffix changes to know the directionality of the road. It adds more complications down the line and the more and more time you let it go. Means it's more work on the boroughs in to maintain the data that you guys are allowing. And we have to keep records of why it was allowed and stuff like that for future reference and stuff like that. So I think if you wanna change stuff or you wanna eliminate stuff, you might as well change code, get rid of the stuff that you don't believe we should be doing. I mean, if you're thinking it's a complication to people, just remove it from code, cuz. I don't wanna have to try to enforce thing or remember which stuff I need to enforce, which ones I don't have to enforce. Because if you're grandfathering some in when things changes usually, that means they have to follow what's in code now. I would think your recommendation, best one would be. Um, if you guys don't wanna recommend a code change, I would say, I don't know how you do it. Of some kind, you send that off to the assembly and be like, our recommendation would be to leave code as it, as it is. And then um, we'll work around our our allowance um, of it. If you think you guys have enough leeway working in code how it is, cuz right now the planner. Has the majority of the decision making and then if it's a variance or something, it goes to the planning commission. Um. I would send that off to the assembly, cuz the assembly was the one that was really into thinking about changing code. Um, and they were talking about maybe this should be an allowance. So I'd say as a body, as a planning commission, your recommendation. What I've heard is you don't wanna change code, just kinda leave it as it is. Um, and then you can work around how it is and. Um, send it up to them and say, you know, we we can work with what we have. Um, we don't recommend changing it and then we'll go through and redo it. I think either way, I'm still gonna have to reverse a lot of the stuff and compile new lists, whether you code or not. And I need to know kinda which way you guys are feeling, cuz I need to make another several lists for you to review to be like. As you said, yeah, this thing's okay, this one's okay, this one's not. And when your final decision comes out, you guys are gonna have to issue a final finding that this is not a detriment to public safety.
Okay. Um. Is Amber available to comment?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm gonna make a true confession here and let you know I stepped away to the restroom and I I didn't hear what the, what I'm asking. What you're asking me to comment on.
Okay. All right, um, so, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, thanks. We're talking process, we're talking, you know, we kinda came in thinking that, well, knowing that there was interest in. Um, a potential code change to uh, allow some flexibility for duplicate names in different communities. And uh, and and some of the other issues that were brought forward. Um, at the same time, there is the the language in the current code. That allows for the planning commission, really on a case by case basis to um, to allow variance with a finding that it. It doesn't adversely impact, you know, public safety and response. So. So we kinda started going down a a road that, you know, minor, that. That would be maybe not changing code and taking all those potential changes as variants. And that was something that we hadn't really discussed about uh, how that might work. And so I wanted to take that uh, minute and hear from, hear from Marcia and and about how that might work, but also in terms of. Um, for you, Amber, like how the assembly. One, one assembly member did say he's interested in changing code. Um, the process between the planning commission and the assembly. We do think that the planning commission should be the driver, frankly, because again, this is going to be coming. To you. And yeah, you can drive by, by saying to the assembly, we think that. Code should be changed and it should be changed to this. Here's our priority. Um, in terms of uh, duplicates can be allowed, should they be in. Different zip codes, for example. Um, and we could talk about that type of. Of of way to address the duplication piece. Um, and we could take each each of the, and then we could take the suffix piece and talk about that. Um, so we're kinda into code change or no code change is where we are.
So what are your comments? Amber.
Yeah, so I guess I have um, a couple of thoughts. Um, one, um, there are some road names like the one I live on that. Um, requires no change. And so I think that um, that there's a selection of um. Roads that could probably, you could, you know, start the process with those that don't need to be changed and um, kind of. Not kind of, work work through current code process um, with the ones that aren't aren't gonna take a lot of discussion or. Um, comment and um, work through it and see, you know, maybe identify some other step in the process that might need to be considered. Uh, my other thought is um, uh, one, we had considered um, trying to do some in-person open houses with. The maps a little bit bigger that people could, you know, touch and feel and look at in real life. Um, so maybe that could be a next step as we just, in- instead. So maybe that could be a next step as we just instead of three virtual meetings, we plan three. Open houses with those maps and try to gather more input. On on those roads that are going to be changed. Another thought is you could. You could also, in addition, if you wanted to have a joint work session with the assembly on this topic. And just make sure that, you know, assembly members aren't trying to solve a problem that you really don't want solved if that's the case. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can I say something? One of the things that I that I heard from Marcia is that. The realization that everyone is going to have to change legal documents because they don't have. The correct number. In front, they don't have the correct house number because there's no way they could possibly have. The correct house number. So everyone will have to change legal documents, whether or not they're changing suffixes. So. I think perhaps the suffix change is kind of a small thing. What are the comments on that particular issue? Susan?
Some people seem to be pretty attached to their suffixes.
Okay. All right. Jim?
Yeah, I think, Marshall, you had a really good point that if you have more than one or two exceptions. Then you you no longer have the knowledge that avenue means a certain thing. So I I think that. For sure is something that we got to be careful not to give too many exceptions out.
Lee.
When it comes to suffixes and and actually all of this, not everybody will be happy. I mean.
That's true.
There there are going to be some things that are not pleasant because. It's more than 10 people involved. I mean, you can't get 10 people to be happy on every occasion. So. It's just gonna be some hurt feelings.
Steve, did you have a comment?
Well. I I do not have a copy of the Nina standards to look at. But that's our confining thing under section B. It had all exemptions, exceptions complies with the Nina standards. And so, you know, until I see those, I couldn't say whether it'd be best to do a. Code change or go with this phase, so. I know I I need to know what those are and I will before I go to bed tonight. I'll know what they are, but right now I don't.
Do we have any way of seeing what the is it in the packet or somewhere else? A way of looking at all of the. The change requests, Marcia, that you're looking at?
He no, I didn't produce a list of. So Sherry and I went through and we basically digitized all the roads, looked at flats, tried to find out what their platted name is. And then just unnamed, named unnamed road. So we have our own kind of personal list of all the roads. That we've inventoried and what the status is on them and we just completed a list. That went out to the public with the maps that was pretty much these were all the proposed name changes or current names and stuff like that. And it's basically been broken down into three, kind of three different types of names is that. There's either no changes or they're being changed because of a suffix or they're being changed because, you know, with duplicate. Or it didn't meet the standard. There's a few of them that a few spellings are being corrected. Things are being misspelled. Were kind of some of the stuff that we had produced a list and then during the meetings I produced another list to show. Like a lot of the comments we had gotten for street names and that's really the list that I have. But if you guys are wanting to see. All the ones that we've changed. The only place to see them is actually on the maps. Because it told you, you know, if it was Galena Place and it was going to.
True.
Court, that's kind of the place to see where the changes were and that the bottom of all the maps. Kind of listed our changes and those were the main changes.
Right, right, okay, yeah. Okay. Steve?
On section nine twelve oh four oh A. One, it says a new street name shall comply to the National Emergency Number Association, Nina. Doesn't say anything about existing or historical names. And I I think we really need to, you know, looking at what this says, I think we really need to have a. A slight modification to the code. To make this less ambiguous. Because then back here it gives us the ability to make variances. Except that it has to comply with the same standards that we're trying to not comply to. So, yeah, I don't I don't see a way forward without. Changing the wording in those two paragraphs anyway, slightly.
Lee.
So can we get together in the following meeting next month? With two or three options for the rewording of that paragraph and approve a resolution? And. That way be less stress. Because these are the, these are the defined rules and then move forward from that.
Good idea.
So so just for. Marcia, Marcia sanity. Word it again and tell me what you're, what we're gonna change in the code.
You asking me?
Yes, Steve.
Okay. Nine twelve oh four oh, section A. Number one, a new street name shall comply to the National Emergency Number Association. Standards and and borough standards. Or if different, whichever standard is stricter. So, you know, I think we need, and it says new name, and so I think we have to put something in that section. That says. That, you know, a variance for existing, if we're going to do this, we have to have a very method of. Using existing names even if they don't comply. Historic and existing names, not new, not new names, but historic and existing names.
Steve, I think you want to go to the next session, nine twelve oh five oh, which is renaming streets.
I mean, and that that applies to the. Duplicates, but it doesn't apply to suffixes. The way I read it.
So you're saying that that section doesn't allow for. Variances that does, does the that naming system require? The the naming system doesn't require suffix particulars, does it? Marcia? Not that we know what that.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, that's the one question.
Generally, a suffix is not something decided by the people, it's decided by the borough. If you have it in code, we wrote code. As if we already had an addressing system and if we're gonna name roads. A new road, if somebody constructed a new road or if we build it, we didn't exactly write code for the initial. Startup of the of the program. So like we didn't write in there that we were going to change names that are already platted. But we wanted to be in compliance and make as few exceptions and conflicts as possible with our initial system. So some of what, you know, Steve is bringing up is, yeah, code's not really written for our initial setup to get it all started. It's for if the system was already in place. Because you're only gonna, once it's in place, you're only gonna have two options. You're either gonna rename in a road that's already named or you're gonna be. Naming a road that was just constructed. So I think what he's, you know, wanting is try to add in some more code language to. Try add in what we're not covering right now, so. The section he's covering is the general rules that we picked. Because we, Chris and I had picked about nine of kind of the. Kind of standards that Nina had set forward. They have like fifteen of them.
Okay. Eric?
Hey, Kestrel, I guess where we're at right now, I just. Kind of see what you had mentioned earlier, like a joint work session coming up where we really need to nail these down. And. Look at those Nina rules, think about the ways and the places and how we want to proceed and then the code as well. So I guess. Take you back and off what Lee said, maybe we should push for a work session prior to our next meeting.
Like a joint work session?
I I think so, based on Clay's recommendation that we weren't going to go off the rails of what the assembly thought was coming at him possibly.
And we can communicate in other ways, too. I, the assembly also has additional meetings. This month, if we're talking before our next meeting. So. Ways forward. To keep, we're just trying to thread that needle. It's what we've been talking about all along, threading that needle between having a standard. And and building a durable system, yeah, from the beginning. But also allowing some flexibility, especially for the retro, especially for the historical. I think, can we agree that going forward? The way the code is structured in terms of standards that are, you know, pretty strong. That those will serve the borough and emergency response well. And we want to, going forward, maintain. The standards that we have in place. Are we in a pretty much agreement there?
Yeah, yeah. I think so.
Shaking her head. Marcia, you're shaking your head.
I mentioned it before, I believe if there are certain things like the suffix thing, if you guys don't really. Care like what the. They have a meaning, just remove it from code altogether and people can pick whatever suffix they want. Because it's not with this exception, it's not going to make any difference to people. They're not going to understand it because if you have all the roads now, basically just are the suffix because that's just what a random person picked. And then moving forward, the suffixes are going to mean something. You're gonna have to know which suffixes were an exemption to the rule and what aren't. And in general, for the general populace, you'll never care about it. It's not something that's probably going to be in your household. Care about, but it becomes more of a problem for like me and maintaining my database. Or for emergency service people like down the road when you don't have the current people in place. And that's where the system starts to fall apart is like when there's a new planning commission or a new assembly or a new borough staff. Is there's a difference between what people will accept and what they don't. And so. That's where exceptions just start building up and rolling off each other. And so my recommendation is if there's certain things in code that you want, you might as well either eliminate them or change them. Get it how you want it now and not make exceptions moving forward.
Yep. So have we heard from emergency services like? You know, Baxter and Lee, have we heard from, you know, what's the emergency services idea on suffixes? Does it matter? Lee?
I've never heard a discussion about suffixes at our meetings. We we need some basis to work off of them.
Do you need to know that it's, I mean, do you need to know that a loop is a loop?
Well, I guess it'd be nice to know the loop is a loop, but. I don't know how important suffixes are going to be. This is.
Like place versus street versus lane.
Versus avenue. I think I'm on an avenue, at least. I think it's an avenue. I don't know, suffixes don't seem important until there's some rules behind them. You know, and and an avenue doesn't mean anything unless there's a rule that says avenue means this and place means that.
And it comes in the place, it's not just locals is, you know, for emergency response. General, the most used people will be our local emergency stuff, you know, people that are responding, but. Into multi jurisdictional, like when a natural disaster happens, you're bringing in. From the lower forty eight from other municipalities that are coming in and I know. One thing is a lot of the states are trying to are trying to create databases and systems that are uniform. And Alaska is trying to get together where like, they mean the same thing in each of the municipalities, so. In case you have a natural disaster or whatever, you can send people, you know, up to there and you're not going to get confused or they're gonna be able to do stuff. And some of our stuff you have to remember is our dispatch comes out of the city of Fairbanks. So, you know, like some of the names in, you know, up by, you know, Nome or Barrel. Their dispatch is probably coming from within their city. So some of their name changes aren't as difficult because. You have native people there that are dispatching where ours is from a completely different city, a completely different borough. And you may be dealing with a teenager, college student, or, you know, a whole different kind of thing. So that's where it adds in some difficulties where you want to have something that is uniform. Through a wide range of people or entities that you can, you know, have understand your system.
Good point. Lee?
The dispatchers in Fairbanks, or at least the dispatch company in Fairbanks, came down to Cantwell twice. And I'm sure they looked at the other communities on the way to try and get an understanding of what was here. So. They were interested in. Understanding how things work here, even though they were out of the area. I mean, they do get paid. So they. I said, they were willing to come here at the start of their service to try and understand it. I don't know how much they. Learned by being on the ground here.
Well, they were very interested for the fact that they were so surprised when they came into my office and they're like, what kind of data can you give me? And I'm like, nothing. I don't have the layers you guys are used to and they're like. Okay, that means in order for them to build their database even from scratch, they had to drive down streets, down roads, look for road signs. They had to, you know, they had to create something that isn't in existence currently. So that's why. Yeah, they came down, they visited and they had to wrap their minds around how they're gonna serve us when. We don't have anything that they're used to.
Okay. I think we're starting to beat a dead horse.
Well.
Mayor?
Might I just beat the suffixes a little more? I did mention at one point that, you know, how valuable are these really? Honestly, you know, in other communities. Have have you seen a uniform system where you always know that every road that goes east west is avenue? I have a bachelor's degree in geography. I'd never heard that before. So, you know, I don't think that everybody's going to come in with an expectation that. That, you know, all streets only only run north, south. So I think that is something to consider to. So I think that is something to consider, to change, a change that could allow more flexibility in, in that system. How valuable is that, that standardized system of suffixes? We heard from some emergency responders who said, not very. We heard from our local sergeant who would have said not very. How, you know, how, how much do we want to, you know, not meet people where they are on this suffix piece?
Yep. Lee?
I understand, once the system's established, we can get maps, digital maps, you know, electronic screens in our vehicles that kind of help us get to the fire, you know, left turn at this street and right turn at that street. And maybe, maybe if we're going to beat up on suffixes and prefixes, maybe with the modern mapping systems and the, the live action screens in the vehicles, it's not as important.
Eric, did you have a question? No, okay. Okay. So I think I've heard a lot of agreements on possibly getting rid of the suffix section in code. I, I don't see any nods or shaking heads or, I wonder if we could have like a, just a hands, how many hands do we have on people that might be in support of getting rid of that section of code? Okay, we have, okay, all right. So we have, we have some, we have some, we, we could at least entertain that discussion next time. Let's, let's look at that next time. Can, can the staff put that together? Mayor? For us for next meeting?
Sure.
So is that, do, do we do that with a resolution? Or do we just change the code and?
It could be a recommendation to the Assembly.
So you could, so, so we could,
Be a motion.
You could put together like a draft of the code with that removed? Is that how we would do that?
We could consider that, yep.
Okay, so, so let's have that on the agenda for the next meeting. And could we do, like, instead of a joint session, I know the Assembly's working on some, some other stuff. Instead of a joint session, could we do a public work session? Like at the beginning of next month's meeting? Could we do like a public hearing that's in person with maps for the northern section? Is that, is it? And then we can kind of work on the change and can we work on the code change at the same time we do this and with the expectation that we would take all the suffix changes out of?
I think we could work on both the suffix change in the meeting and, yeah, hold a work session in advance on some. I would suggest it would be the no change names, right?
Yeah.
I would suggest that we start with the easy ones.
Do we do borough-wide no change names? Can we do that?
Do adopt these no name changes or what are you looking to do with the road names? Because I was originally thinking, you know, we go through our kind of meetings, we kind of finalize it. And then you guys would kind of phase in your adoption of creating official road names. And we could start with like the no changes. And then if people were fine, like suffix changes, and then ones that were unnamed or whatever. But what exactly are you guys looking for in like your no name changes?
Lee?
We're, we're going to need clarification whether we're going to have suffixes or not before we can determine if it's a street is, is or isn't going to be changed in its name.
That's true.
If I'm on it, we, well, we know what's, we understand, I think we understand why it's true.
Yep, yep. Steve?
I, I'm all for keeping the code for all new name, roads, na- names like it is for the future. I think that's nothing wrong with that at all because, you know, but, you know, I think we need to, my opinion is that we need to modify the code to allow more flexibility to change and use some of the more historic names that, and suffixes, the prefixes or whatever that we, that are there to make it as compatible with the way people express themselves in the three two-hour-plus sessions that we attended last, last, in the last couple of weeks or whatever. You know, so I don't think we ought to scrap what's there. I think we just need to make a section that allows us more flexibility to adopt some things that already exist. Or to recommend an option as things that exist.
But I think what I've been hearing from Marsha is that if, if you're not going to go with the suffixes, the way they're written in code for the, for the adopted roads, then the, the suffix in, the suffixes are going to be meaningless. Because there's going to be so many that don't meet the standard.
Today, but I don't agree with you twenty years from now.
Well, twenty years from now, the ones that are already an exception are still going to be an exception. So you may get a whole bunch of new ones, but, you know, on your end, you're going to have to know which ones are in exceptions and which ones aren't. Which if you remember what they are, I guess you'll, once you're driving down it and it's supposed to be an east-west road and it goes north and south, you'll know.
So.
But I, if you do need to change code, if you are really wanting Cantwell to be exempt from the borough standards where they would create their own, and the only reason the borough would be involved would just be to house whatever their databases, you do need to change that in code. Because right now, you know, the city of Anderson, the National Park and Clear Air Force Base are the only ones that are exempt from following borough standards. So the native village of Cantwell, you want them to take it on? They would be responsible for addressing, making the rules, implementing and everything down in the, in their area. The borough would not be. The only thing I would do would be housing their information in my database. So that is a consideration if you're wanting them to be kind of an autonomous from the borough standards. You need to make it and they need to understand they're the ones that are going to have to enforce it, maintain it, do everything.
So I don't want to tell them what to do. I want to ask them what they want to do.
Well, that's a question you'd have to ask them and then that would be their responsibilities. If they want to take it, they're taking over all of it. So the native village wants to do it, they want to pick their names, they want to go by their rules. Then it would be on them to take it all over. And the only thing I'd be is just asking what they've decided and plugging it into my database.
Okay, Gordon's got his hand raised. Gordon, I'd like to hear from you.
I'm sorry. The only thing we've been asking is to probably have about six or maybe eight of our certain roads in our, right where some of us live. Like over there by the village council, over here in where my brothers and I live, is naming a couple of our roads after some traditional names, you know, and mostly they're animal names, but traditional names, just to recognize our heritage. But it almost feels like we're being chastised or something for wanting to, to hold on to something. You know, and, and, and in the future, if, if one of the, or, one of the people decided to subdivide their native allotment, I think that person should have the right, if the, if they put some streets in their native allotment because they subdivided, to be able to name it, you know, to, to, to hold on to some cultural aspects. But it almost feels like I'm, I'm supposed to be guilty for being part native here. Is the sense?
But it's not. Thank you, Gordon. That is not at all what we're, that, that's not the message that we're sending at all. So, but I appreciate your, your comment. And so it, so Steve, back to you, it sounds like that's not at all what they're asking. They're not, they're not asking to take over autonomy. They're, they're, they're asking for exactly what they're getting, which is, is a discussion with Mar- Marsha. So I think Marsha has it well in hand and to, to work with the native village of Cantwell to, to work with these last six or seven roads that they're working on. So I think we let her continue, continue doing that.
I hadn't heard that aspect of it vocalized. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Gordon's happy, I'm happy.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we keep letting Marsha do her work with that, with that issue. And, um, okay, so, so I, I'm still, I, I still think we, we should have the discussion about the suffixes next meeting. Where do we want to go with public, like a public process for asking the public to, you know, come and look at some maps? And, and we can look at maps like in a work session?
You, you have to get the suffixing fixed before you're going to look at a map even, I think. And I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand and get recognized.
That's fine, that's fine, Lee. So, okay. Mayor?
Thank you. Might it be that the road names, which have no changes, they're platted in a manner that, you know, does conform with the current standard? And those suffixes, I don't believe, would really be contemplated to change because they're, they're not already. And why would they be in the future if we loosened the suffix standard? So potentially those good-to-go, we'll call them, road names could be, could, you know, we could start there. And now granted, they're, you know, they've, whether we want to concentrate it in one area and say the good-to-go names in the north, that's what we want to do first? Or do we want to do the good-to-go names in the whole borough? And get, you know, get the process moving?
I'm all for getting the process moving.
Adopting, like if you next month decide to adopt unchanged road names, it's not going to really move much more forward. I'm not assigning addresses to those people. So wait until you decide if you're going to remove suffix things where there's no, if you don't want to change suffixes, that'll just add probably eighty more roads borough-wide that are not going to be changed. So that's just going to put more road names on your list.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's not a hurry to get all, to get a lot of stuff right now because I pretty much have to have a majority of this decided, road name-wise, before I even start creating the database to assign addresses and stuff, so.
Okay.
So you still have a little bit of time and there still needs to be more discussion with unnamed roads and stuff like that. Because we do need buy-in for a lot more people that live on roads. One person that's on a road that proposes a name change, those people down there need time to digest what that road name change is because you have to have at least seventy-five percent of the people on a road to change a name.
Okay. Um, so if we change code next meeting and we have, how many meetings do, does it have to go through the Assembly?
Two, seven, two.
So that would be three more months if we change code? And then, well, the Assembly meets after us, right? Is that right? No, the Assembly meets before us.
It generally may be before you, but next month, it'll be before you next month, so it wouldn't go on their June. It wouldn't even introduce it until June.
So then we're talking about June, July, August. Is that going to slow up your process, Marsha? Or are you thinking that, that your process is going to take that long?
Right now, my process may take that long. I need to have a road name before I can even give a number on it. So right now, if we kind of postpone it, it might, they'll give me more time. I'll take that time to work with people that are unnamed roads. Or if they really, I guess, it'll depend on if you guys are going to allow duplicates or not per community. It, you know, I can take time with some people or I'll have to redo my whole database depending on what you're proposing to change. And it, you know, and it'd be better off to change what you want in code now, so there's not a lot of issues where you guys are going to have to decide. Because, you know, Gordon decided he wanted a road name and he comes to me and I'm like, no, this doesn't follow code. He basically will now have to wait a month to go to you guys to get a variance. Versus just working with me, being like, hey, can we do this? And, you know, if he decides I want this road name and that's what it is, he has to wait until you guys meet again. So I would say if you're wanting to change code, change it to make it, you know, as easy as possible that people can work with me as much as possible before having to go to you guys. Because, yeah, if they're needing to go to you guys at different stages, it may take them a month before they can get an address or two months.
Okay, let me ask a question. We could shave off this process if we met, if we did a special meeting before the Assembly meets next month?
You have two weeks, I think, before they meet. You can either meet next week or the week before that or the week after.
Yep. What, what's the thought behind that? Because we would, we would be talking about, like, two things, I think, to change, two, two possible changes in code. One would be the duplicates between communities and the other would be the suffix, you know, the possible getting rid of the suffix language in code.
You'd have to talk to Amber because most likely you guys would have to meet sometime in the next week, week and a half, because she's going to have to have that for her agenda and her packets.
Amber, is that even possible?
The Assembly has a meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. At this point, we're, we're just, we need ten days to post if you guys are going to be, have a meeting and take action. So we would need at least ten days from now and that, well, next week's outside that ten-day mark anyways, so. Anytime after ten days, we could do it. For the May twelfth meeting, I would need, I get the packet out a week before, so so we'd have to meet the third, fourth, or possibly the fifth. Of May.
Is that is that possible for um, a majority of the commissioners? To meet that first week of May? One, two, three, four, yes, everybody that I see. Okay, could we do that? Let's think about the um, these two changes that we're talking about and um, and we'll we'll make those changes, um, vote on them, talk about that in the next meeting, in a special meeting. Is that doable? Sounds like it's doable. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so when you say those changes, let's hone in on on that.
Okay.
So we're talking about code language, code language, code revision to um, to for suffixes, say that, yeah, the borough will assign suffixes going forward um, based on a standard. Of course, you know, we're not gonna call something that's a loop uh, uh, you know,
Avenue.
An avenue away or place, but um, we'll ba- we'll base them on a standard. And the the borough will assign suffixes going forward to new streets as they as they um, develop. And at the same time, um, for the initials, road naming of the borough, existing suffixes, um, when they are not proposed for change by, you know, others um, would stand, something like that for suffixes.
Something like that, yes, we, yeah, we would, we would need some kind of standard. You're right. Um, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it sounds pretty good.
Marcia, you were shaking your head.
I've mentioned it before. I think you might as well just get rid of the whole suffix thing or only have three kinds of suffixes, you know? If it ends in a cul-de-sac, it's a court. If it's meets on the same thing, it's a loop. And any other street can be whatever you want it to be. That's a street, a drive, a lane, a boulevard, an avenue. It could just be any of those. It doesn't matter.
Right, and that would.
Put it all together.
Yeah.
Because honestly, it doesn't mean anything to you. It probably means more to me because of how I have to do my databases. But the general, like, it doesn't care except for the fact that people don't want to change their address.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only reason people, you know, have that issue. Um, I think to get rid of it because if you're being ambiguous or having exceptions, you know, I have seen so many places that you start to get so many exceptions that eventually you have to redo your whole system. It's not just redoing one thing. You have to redo it. And, you know, it just becomes a problem, so you might as well get rid of it to begin with.
And that's what we heard from people. They want a durable system that lasts.
Yeah, they want a system that lasts, but they also want it to be their way. And unfortunately, this is one of those things where you have to have a certain standard and you gotta follow it. Because otherwise, during a period of time, it doesn't mean anything. And it just becomes more and more unmaintainable, which, you know, at this point in time, a big thing is, is, you know, if a street sign gets knocked down, you're gonna have to depend, really, dispatch will have to depend on what's on my system. You know, versus the world or on what's maps. And if my systems become so unmaintainable because there's so many rules or so many different things and remembering who can have what, who can't do what, when things have to change, um, it becomes a big problem because, you know, also down the road is we have one department doing a whole bunch of stuff
Yep.
um, that we need it to be maintainable, or it's gonna cost us a lot of money to pay somebody to do it for us.
Mm-hmm.
So this could lead to problems in the future.
Yeah, so I like the standard that you just you just suggested, that there's there's only three things on it. There's either, if it meets back to the same place, then it's a loop. If it's, if it ends in a turnaround, it's a cul-de-sac, right? And then if it's a regular street that goes straight or curves or whatever, then it's whatever you want. And then you list those things, those acceptable um, suffixes. And that's the new standard. And then everything that we have should conform to that standard.
No, no, we have in place won't meet to it because like if it ends in a cul-de-sac, you need to pick one word, whether they're gonna be places or courts.
Oh.
Which currently, you know, the Tri-Valley subdivision has both, and we're trying to change them to conform for our standards. So we may have things that aren't in place because um, you know, it's just gonna be a general clause. There's really only four kinds of roads. Either have roads that are straight or curvy. Um, there's, you know, ones that it dead end or in cul-de-sacs, circles, which is basically a street that comes back on itself, which we don't have. Um, which are more likely in like trailer courts or uh complexes like that, roads that actually well, um, and then like uh loops are really the major ones. And then, yeah, everything else just is either a lane, a drive, a road, et cetera, which is pretty much how it'd be in code. Any road that's not a loop or a circle or dead ends can be whatever, I guess, a person would want. And, yeah, you'd have to be, you'd have to put that in place going forward, which would still mean that you'd have things that might not be in code because you're gonna have exceptions to the rule unless you just completely wipe out suffixes altogether and people pick whatever they want.
Yeah. Mark.
So Marcia, of the roads that are still kind of in question, how many of them are related to a change in suffix? I mean approximately. And and if so, uh, is the reason they don't want to change the suffix because they don't want to change their address? But you're saying that everybody in the boroughs can change their address anyways, so let me just move forward with the suffixes.
Um, I believe there was, I think when I calculate, I think there's like eighty roads that need their have their suffix changed about. Um, and, yeah, eh, everybody's gonna have to submit a new address verification letter because nobody has their actual, you know, address number. I mean, most people have the, uh, what is it, like NH, which is no house number and the name. They have, um, you know, they use whatever they made up for their address, either, you know, their distance down the road, their P O box, their law and block number. Um, I would say if there's one lucky person that might have guessed their address right, most likely nobody on the Parks Highway has their address right. I can guarantee that because, I mean, once you're up in Healy, your address is like forty-eight thousand. And nobody's picked something like that. So, yeah, everybody's gonna have to take in the letter that the borough provides them that says this is your official address. Um, they'll have to do whatever place needs it.
Well, then we're back to what Lee said earlier. Not everyone's gonna be happy. I mean, but if having a standard is important going forward, and even if we cut it down to to courts or places, we're still gonna have that problem with people don't want to change that. You know, and and it's there's no way around it, it seems.
Eric.
I guess, you know, Steve's been looking at it too and Martian, but if you have the data right off the top of your head. So I I prefer the standard like you had proposed and kind of the way we were going out because we do need a standard to go off of. But how many exceptions were we talking? I've kind of lost the bubble on that. Um, of of people that spoke up during those three meetings that were like, oh, historical preference or precedent says that this was a way, way long time ago.
Probably people that commented, I mean, I don't know, I probably had maybe twenty or thirty people that might have commented on, you know, my suffix is changing. I want to keep it because that's what I have on my legal documents. Um, you know, there's those, like the suffix changes, some of the people are going more on historic of what they've been calling the road where it's a unnamed road. Um, and, you know, uh, when a name is platted, that makes it an official road name. So that's why, like the Tri-Valley subdivision where we're probably proposing to change at least fifteen of those names, just the suffixes, like none of the names are changing, but the suffixes are changing to meet our standards. And sometimes, uh, like the state has a standard and theirs might have been reversed compared to what ours was. Um, you know, they might have called places things that were over a thousand feet and uh courts, things that were shorter because kind of looking at them is that's what it actually looks like is theirs was kind of reversed compared to ours. Um, but, yeah, there's, you have eighty suffix changes and then if you allow duplicates, that's close to like another hundred roads that could potentially somewhere between fifty to a hundred that could be reversed and added in. Um, so there's potential for like a lot of changes or you'd go with like the standards. Um, I I don't know how many historic, I've probably only heard maybe ten people that were proposing like a platted road name change. And it's been in, you know, historical. Um, but there's a few like Park Lane in Healy. That's not actually its platted name. It was platted as Borealis. Um, I had a resident up there tell me that the highway commission came along and flopped up a sign. It wasn't even the residents in the area, um, and they'd like to go back to their platted name.
Hmm. Steve.
Well, one one thing uh hit my mind when uh we're on the third meeting when we're up there is uh, like the Kobe Boniface Trail, which is an RS two-four-seven-seven. Somebody wanted to name it their name.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a way of using trail in our suffixes at this time or a road. But, you know, and to me, that's the Kobe Boniface Trail, and that's what it should be. But we don't have the ability to make it that at this point, so.
See, I didn't want to use some of those historic names, especially for trails, gets kind of iffy because the state has actually labeled like six different trails, Kobe. Um, there's a Kobe Bonneville Trail, there's a Kobe McGrath Trail, there's a Kobe. Um, you know, there's a whole bunch of them, and I left out having people have the ability to use trail um, in the road name because I also have to assign addresses to places that are rural that actually have to use trails. So if what they're using isn't an actual trail anymore, it's a road. Um, you know, I was having them name it, and then if it's an actual trail, because I got somebody that's out by the Wood River that wants an address. And they're gonna be off of an actual trail, or I've got people along the Rex Trail. And that would help, you know, emergency response. Now, if it's the Rex Trail, they're actually going on the Rex Trail, which means they're gonna need something, and the ambulance isn't going down there. They're needing four-wheelers, um, six-by-sixes, you know, stuff like that. So I left a few of that out of there, so I have the ability to give remote addresses, something that is um, distinguishable to them. So people that are on rivers and stuff like that or creeks.
Hmm. Okay.
Airbanks has done that. They've left it in there, so it could have been like the Kobe Trail Road. And they still, they leave the trail in there, but they actually add on a road, a street or whatever. Um, but we didn't put that in our code.
So so I think we're back to having the the suffixes in the code. At least that's what I'm hearing.
So how about those duplicates?
How about those duplicates? Lee.
I I guess the on the question of duplicates, if we decide that one community can, each community can have the same name, then we'd have to define the borders of the communities, you know, so. What's, if we're gonna allow duplicates, what would the language need to be to be somewhat simple? And and I asked this of Marcia, would a a distance be an easier way to do, avoid duplicate or allow duplicates? Or would a communities be a best, what would be the best way to allow duplicates that could be implemented by you easily?
You would have to do it by postal code. Because your address still has to follow the standard of like a mailing address for the post office. And they determine the areas by postal code because otherwise you'd have duplicates in a postal area.
Okay, so if we.
Easily define it as the postal code, so however the Census Bureau ties it up or the postal code.
So if we said something in our, not resolution, but our code change for the next meeting in two weeks, um, if we said something in the nature of no duplicates within a postal code, would that resolve most of the duplicates?
Um, yeah, that actually solved, I think, all of our duplicates because I don't think we've actually maybe one. I guess the northern region is the only one that might potentially have it. Like, I don't know where.
With all the clears.
What is? Yeah, because there's a clear, because like there's the Anderson subdivision, which is actually the far north of, you know, of the Kobe Ag area.
Kobe.
Right, the Minana River. There's an actual state, you know, because state surveyed or created a um subdivision up there that is actually owned by the University of Alaska. And it's not in the city limits, but I don't know where their postal code is because most of them use rural mailboxes. Which I think comes down, their rural mailbox is actually Minana in some of those areas.
Well, maybe the the clear sky, clear law or clear sky and clear, the various clears will be the one exception. Uh, um, and we allow that under the exception rule because it's the clear area.
Is it? Yeah, but is that? Is that clear enough?
Duplicates in an area because of the fact that, you know, when the fire happened up in, you know, Anderson, you know, and you have to account is, you know, you're not always gonna be dealing with locals. What happened up there was the Department of Forest, she was like, hey, there's a fire on Anderson Road. Well, most of us all think Anderson Road is the road that leads into Anderson. So the uh city of Anderson started to evacuate. They didn't clarify that it's Anderson Road, which is platted just north of like Joe Chatfield's parcel in the Kobe Ag area.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
And that's why they don't recommend having duplicates in like broader areas. So that was one of the reasons why we don't recommend having it boroughwide is because, you know, it takes more efforts and more questions and more stuff to figure out, to get that information of where the location is. Because if all you say is Anderson, a lot of times you're gonna think of the one road that you might know that's named that. And, you know, for me, I would have thought it's Anderson Road. And I'm thinking that the Kobe Ag area has the Anderson subdivision and the Anderson Road over there too, which causes a lot of confusion, which is one of the reasons, um, you know, on our third night, a lot of those people were like, let's change Anderson Road to like Lightning Road. Because it caused a huge confusion up in that area.
Right.
Okay, well, there's a duplicate people want to remove, and if that's.
Yeah.
So that's a win. But maybe the no duplicates in a postal code is a prudent way to allow some duplicates in the borough.
Yeah, I think that would be a pretty easy change that we could do. Maybe that's the only change we need. Maybe we could do it right now. And not have another meeting. No?
Yeah, yeah, you totally, meaning.
No, it is Amber saying no? Why?
No, because we listed this as discussion only, a discussion.
Discussion only means we can't make anything.
We don't have any code listed on the agenda, so.
Not code, but the assembly's, uh, yeah. Not code, but the assembly, yeah. Thanks, Amber. But if I might, the the assembly is is the one who's going to, you know, process and improve code changes.
Could we, could we do a resolution?
Motion, through a motion, you could express your interest in a code change. And ask that it go, you wouldn't be able to see it first before it goes to the assembly if you want it on the May, which is very quick. You want it on the May. Was that the?
Yeah, because it can't be, i- is it possi- I mean, it can't be put on the April because the, I mean, even with an agenda change.
April's behind us.
Wait, I thought April, I thought they're meeting next week. Are they meeting? Is that a special meeting?
Special budget meeting with a singular topic.
Yeah.
The next regular meeting is May 12. And if you're interested in a singular code change that would relate to duplicates and allowing duplicates in more distant communities based on rather than mileage based upon postal zip code. I would think maybe you could make that motion and then we we could bring that chunk of code to the assembly. What do you think of that, Amber?
I think we listed it as a discussion item only and to make any motion would be inappropriate. Just my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
About the planning commissioner that's going to go to the assembly meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could just send it to the assembly meeting with the planning commissioner. And just, just say that, you know, this is what we discussed.
Sure, but it wouldn't be code ready, it wouldn't be an ordinance ready for introduction at the May meeting. Which, you know, we don't have to necessarily rush this. And this would be rushed.
Yeah. Eric.
Yeah, I was just gonna say what exactly what Clay said. We don't have to rush this one. So why not do it the right way? And we'll have it ready for the next meeting. And then we can just push it through.
All right. Steve.
Well, I think that we ought to do it the right way. And I think we ought to try to deal with the suffix issue and the duplicate issue all in one, one resolution.
Okay.
Forward to the assembly.
Jim.
I think the third one, Gordon mentioned it a couple of times was the punctuation. This might be the time to consider whether we want to do that in that package.
Okay.
His issue is the punctuation and the pronouncibility. Because what we have in code is that you need to try to pick names that are not hard to pronounce and they don't have similar sounding names are not allowed.
Okay.
So the punctuation isn't in code, but it's kind of one of the unwritten rules. Kind of the same thing is we don't have in code that you cannot pick curse words and derogatory names. But it is an unwritten rule.
Yeah, and for sure, there's a, I think some debate to be had on whether we should change that. So rather than keep chewing on it here today, maybe we can just commit to putting that on with the rest of it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So we're just going to have our regular main meeting. Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna address these, we're gonna address code changes at our May meeting. And we'll, we'll draft up those code changes and whoever wants to work on that before then, then you can send suggestions to Amber. How about that? Is that that good? Are we?
Yeah, that's good. If I can just clarify my, what I would do right now, if I didn't clarify this would, I would just put in the whole section, that whole section of code for your next meeting and we'll just work our way through it.
Yes.
Good? Okay.
Yes.
Good. I can do that.
Okay. Okay. I think we're on to business item L, public comments. Do we have any more public that wants to comment?
This is Gordon from Kennewa. I just want to say thank you for listening. I appreciate it and good luck on all of this. A lot of people to try to please. Lee's right. A lot of us will be mad. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. We appreciate you being here. Okay, Commissioner comments. I'll start with Mark.
Thank you, everybody for attending and I agree that addresses coming to Denali Borough has been a long time and, you know, no need to rush it and let's get it right.
Eric.
I'll piggyback on what Mark said.
Susan.
Um, yeah, my head's kind of spinning with this, but yeah, I don't think we need to rush it and we'll just plow through it in May.
Okay. Steve.
I've said a lot, but I also changed my mind a little bit tonight too. So this, for me, it's been a good discussion.
Good. Lee.
Am I the only one that that thinks maybe the May meeting could be in person in the Healy gathering place?
I, I think that's, that's further down the agenda.
Oh, I
But, but yes, yes, we, we will discuss that.
I, I think addresses are a great thing and that'll be my comment.
Jim.
Hey, I'm just going to be spending some time in the next, before the next meeting, looking at how much consent there is. Maybe there's a lot of these addresses that there really is no disagreement on, no comments, anything like that. So I'll be looking at that. Appreciate all the work and talk here today.
Baxter.
This certainly has gotten complicated from when we first started off with this. And, but I do think we should have a genuine face to face meeting.
All right. Thanks, everybody. I, yeah, I, I really appreciate the discussion. Everyone's got good ideas and I appreciate the input from from the public. And thanks Tammany for your comments and thanks Gordon for your comments and adding to the discussion. All right. So Planning Commission report to the Assembly. So we're not actually doing anything. We could help them understand where we are with things. So is there someone that would be able to go to the the meeting on May 12? Did I miss a raised hand? No. The mayor's going. All right, I'll go. May 12, I will go there. Okay. All right. And now time and place of next meeting. It's on May 19. Comments. Okay, Lee.
Well, I, I'm ready to get together. I mean, I've been flying on planes and and I, I think it's time to get together. That's, I don't, you know, e- either you, you think it's time or you don't. So and if it's not, maybe we need some criteria when it is.
I'd like to ask the borough staff, what is your capability of the, the technology? Can you film a Zoom meeting? So that the public can see it and and hear it?
I guess I'll take that. I am working right now to try to figure out how to how to do a well presented hybrid meeting where some people can be in person, some can be virtual, which includes public, virtual or in person. I, I would say I'm maybe eighty percent there, not a hundred percent. But if you, if you give me that gentle nudge, I could, I'll be there.
Okay. Other comments, what, what's the comfort level of, of in person? And if we're not comfortable now, what's the, what's the threshold? Steve.
Well, I just, I mean, what's the rules? Social distancing, mask or what, you know? So that, that makes a difference to me depending on how many case numbers are in the community, whether it's communal spread and stuff like that.
Yeah, I would
We, we had walk around sessions before. And we ended up using mask after the second one or something. I just want to know what the criteria, what, what kind of rules are we going to follow?
My preference would be masks.
I mean, I'm vaccinated, so I, I feel pretty safe, but you know, I wouldn't necessarily say that Healy is the safest place in the world to have a meeting.
Lee.
You know, ma- masks and the six foot of space or we'd probably achieve ten foot of space. But wouldn't seem unreasonable if we got together at all. I think those are good. It's probably too personal a question to ask who's been vaccinated, who isn't, because that's medical and we don't want to ask those kind of questions. But, yeah, I would think it'd be a mask event. I mean, that seems to be the the way, you know, they're flying on airplanes and getting together.
Any other comments? Could we? I don't know. Who, who else is feeling good or funny about meeting in person?
In, I'm with Steve. I'm vaccinated. I feel comfortable meeting in person. Masks, a little bit of distance between each other. I don't see a problem with that personally. I would be willing to do that kind of a meeting.
Okay.
And, and obviously it means it goes without being said, but you know, if you're not feeling well, stay home.
Yep. And then you can still attend via Zoom.
Yeah, I'm on the same page. I think, you know, the vaccine's been publicly available to anybody over sixteen for about a month and a half now, maybe a little bit more. I feel fine in person. I think it's probably a good idea to wear masks and keep social distance. And that extra bit of keeping it online so that people could watch from home. Why not? That seems pretty pretty conservative.
Susan.
So are we saying that members could, that commissioners could do it from home?
I think that should be an option.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm actually okay with coming to the meeting, just.
But it would be an option, yeah.
Yeah.
It would need to be an option so that we, so that if we're sick, then we can still attend from home.
Yeah. If we felt like it.
Even if healthy.
Even if healthy, we can, yeah.
And I don't think we're at a point yet where we can make people attend.
Right. Yep, I agree. Okay, so I, I'm hearing a lot of approval for that idea. So let's do an in-person meeting. Wednesday, May 19, 6:00 PM. But also be available on Zoom so that if a commissioner wants to join on Zoom, that they can do that. And then the public can join on Zoom. Or the public can be in person as well. But masks are required and social distancing.
Sounds good.
Okay. Yes, Mayor, please.
Believe this will be, you know, our first hybrid effort and it will be a challenge to capture a group who's socially distanced in a large room on screen. That will be a challenge and it may be that each commissioner would that it would be helpful for each commissioner to have a device that they could see those persons on, on the Zoom, whether it's another commissioner or the public. And so I guess I would suggest bring your devices at this point. Just think of that. And if you don't have one, talk to us. I'm no guarantees before the next meeting, but you know, I think, is that, is that
Those iPads that the borough has borrowed from the school could have Zoom put that on them.
Yeah. We could use those, huh? Yeah.
Our students use their iPads for Zoom.
Okay. So maybe that's the type of hybrid that we'd be looking to have. Is that, that's kind of what you've been looking at, Amber? Amber has been putting a lot of thought and work into this.
That's exactly what I've been looking at. I used the iPads last night. I had my son Danny, who knows a bit about technology, helped me. We tested it out. It worked really good. We did have a speaker. However, there was only two of us in the room, so it'll, you know, well, we're going to try it and we'll have it together and but it'll be our first hybrid meeting and we'll do it. It's good.
Okay. All right. We're paving the way. Okay, all right. And with that, we are going to adjourn. So, thanks. Good meeting.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
I have your laptops, Lee and Jim. So if you guys want to set up a time, I can give you your new laptop.